Good evening. I would like to call our reorganization meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States. America. Into the Republic. Dispossess the thing as. One nation's. Undercover. Indivisible. Will never be. In justice. For all. It is my pleasure to begin our meeting by giving the oath of office to our district clerk, Deborah Stover Carpenter. Deb, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the school district clerk.
Of the duties of the school district clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Deb. The board clerk will now give the oath of office to our newly reelected board member, Mr. Tucker.
Hi Ted. You could raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. The board clerk will now give the oath of office to our newly elected board member, Mrs. Robin Scott.
Hi, Robin. If you could raise your right hand, repeat after me. Are you there?
Yes.
Okay. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
The duties of a Board of Education member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Your life is about to change, Robin.
Can't get out now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can we have a motion for the approval of the reorder agenda?
Summer.
Second.
And Pete. Thank you. Any questions or discussion, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you approved? Can I have a recommendation for this year's president of the Board of Education?
I would like to nominate Amy Thomas as president of the board for 2021. I believe that her accomplishments as our board president and her very unwavering dedication to serving our school community through some extremely challenging and difficult times has been an asset to our board and our district, and I am confident that she'll continue to be an outstanding president.
Thank you, Val. At this point, I'd like to call for a vote of approval for Mrs. Amy Thomas by show of hands. I see one, Pete, Renee two, Robin three, Irene four, Ted five, and Val six. Did I miss anyone? So that is unanimous. Congratulations, Amy. And also want to thank you for your willingness to serve another term.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Val.
Okay. Amy, you ready?
I'm ready.
Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Board of Education President.
The duties of the Board of Education President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congrats.
Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, you want to turn it over to me at this point?
This is my favorite part of the meeting. I now, I will now officially turn the board meeting over to board president, Mrs. Amy Thomas.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, so we'll move on to the election of Vice President of the Board of Education. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Ted Aristi as Vice President of the Pittsburgh Board of Education.
Thanks, Robin. If I could have a show of hands in support of having Ted as our Board of Education Vice President. I see Irene. I see Val. And I need to move my screen so I can see others. I see Renee, I see Pete waving.
Thank you.
And Val, and Robin. I think that's unanimous. Congratulations, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
Okay, Ted, you ready?
Sure.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Board of Education Vice President.
The duties of the Board of Education Vice President.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congrats.
Congrats, Deb. Thank you.
Okay, if we could move on, Deb, to the oath of office to Superintendent Puro.
Absolutely. Mike, you ready?
I'm ready, Deb.
Okay. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Superintendent of Schools.
The duties of Superintendent of Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to appointments. May I have a motion to approve all of the 2020-2021 appointments?
So moved.
Okay, so I have Ted and Pete. Any questions?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have designations to approve. Or our depositories. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks Irene and Val. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. And now we have authorizations. May I have a motion to approve the authorizations for this coming school year?
So moved.
Okay, thanks Pete and Renee. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And this is where we get to board committee appointments. I'm working off of last year's list. So if we could just have a discussion about Monroe County School Board Committee appointments. I know I forwarded this in an email to all of you, but if we could just confirm who would like to be involved on what committee? If anyone would like to shift responsibilities, we can have that be a discussion this evening. But I'll just quickly run through the list. And Deb, if I'm going too fast, just raise your hand and we can slow down. So for executive meeting, it will be Mike as superintendent. I was a part of that because I'm the Monroe County School Board President. And now as board president, I would also be a part of that. So executive is set. Legislative, we have Val Baum, who has stepped in as co-chair for 2020 and 2021. And we need an alternate for legislative. Does anyone have an interest? Irene?
Yeah.
Excellent.
That's awesome. That's going to be a really important.
Yeah.
This year. We're already talking about what that will look like, how we're going to advocate, and advocating is starting very early, as you would imagine with everything going on. So Irene, thank you so much for stepping up. Just remember that when you do go to the first meetings, and it's my understanding that we are going to be holding meetings live, socially distanced at the Doubletree. Just sign up for the always there, and Irene, you're more than welcome to be always there. I think having two sets of eyes on this committee is going to be really vital. So thank you.
Yep.
Labor Relations is completely open this year. So does anyone have?
I'm happy to do it if nobody else wants to.
Did anyone else want to step into that?
Well, I was, I was thinking about that, but I also, you know, was thinking also about communications outreach. And I, I think it wouldn't be too much to do both of those, but I welcome others' opinions on that.
So Community Outreach, Pete, is a smaller committee, and they only assign actual chairs to that committee, and it's not representative of every Monroe County School Board.
Got it.
So the only opening would be in Labor Relations because there's no opening in Community Outreach.
How about I back Pete up then on Labor Relations?
Perfect. If that works for both of you, is that okay?
Yeah, I, I'm looking forward to Labor Relations. I've never participated in that committee.
It's a, it's a good one.
Yeah. I'll be leading on you, Irene.
Irene gets a lot of knowledge about Labor Relations.
No, I've enjoyed that one, but it's nice to have a different change of pace. Yeah, it's good.
Cool.
Can I have a quick question?
Sure.
Are the meetings still during the day at noon?
Most of them are going to be during the day with the exception of information exchange because we will have, I, I believe we started this a couple of years ago where we have afternoon meetings as well for those who can't make the, the noon meeting.
Okay.
And it's my understanding this year's topics, I just sent all of you an email. I think all those topics are going to change, by the way, given the circumstances that we're under. So certainly you can tell from that list, and for anyone who's watching, Information Exchange is, is covering our professional development of hot topics. Anything that's happening throughout the school year or in the foreseeable future. And last year's list was developed prior to COVID, so I think that's definitely going to change. So any input that all of you have for topics going forward, I think will be really valuable for all of us. So if you could think about that as individual members and just forward that information to me so that we can put that in the suggestion, suggestion box for this year. Having said that, Robin, Information Exchange is, is a committee where I just basically the premise of it, but it is professional development typically covering issues that all boards are facing. And so what we've historically done is anyone who's new to the board finds extreme value in, in being a participant on that committee. So I slotted your name in there. If you have an objection to being part of that, certainly let me know, but I think you would like it.
Happy to serve. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we have Robin as the primary, and anyone as an alternate?
I'd love to do it.
You both can do it. Irene, anyone's welcome to go. It's not, I mean, anyone is welcome to go to these meetings. The only difference is you just need to let Deb know who's planning to attend. So if we have Renee, I don't see anything wrong with having Renee and Irene on that. And if both of you want to attend and the rest of the board wants to attend a particular meeting, there will be times where I'm sure all of us will be there.
Right.
So that's great. So I have Renee and Irene, Deb. Board Presidents. The Board Presidents is changing this year. You may have seen that in the Monroe County School Board update. Given the set of circumstances, again, I think that it's, it would be a productive use of time to bring on Board Presidents and Vice Presidents, and that was kind of consensus with the Executive Board of Monroe County School Boards. So this year it will be myself along with Ted attending those meetings. Steering Committee would be Mike. I don't think Mike knew that he was going to be part of Steering Committee, but he has the luxury of being part of that committee because I'm assigned the task of being the Monroe County School Board President. So as the president, the superintendent is allowed to participate with me, which is great.
I just want to say thank you for that, Amy.
Thanks, Mike.
Is that a may or a shall?
Yeah.
Also, we'll have Val at the table as being a co-chair of Information, or not Information Exchange Legislative. So thanks, Val, for that as well. So then we move on to the District Board Committees. Val, you have been in Legislative Liaison. I don't know if you want to change that, if you would like to have a conversation about that, if you'd like to continue.
I'm happy to continue, but if somebody else would like that opportunity, that's fine, too.
Anyone else? Again, this is, this is an opportunity. I, I see this evolving into an opportunity. Whatever advocacy looks like this year, there will be opportunities for all of us to be a part of that. So.
Yeah, great. When do they meet? Because for me, again, it, it comes down to meeting times during the day. I'm not usually available.
So the Legislative Committee meetings are at noon. But this Legislative Liaison is really, and Pete, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Irene, but it was really developed, I think, as its own entity for our board, for someone who would attend most of the Albany trips and report back to the board. I don't know how many Albany trips we'll have this year. Right now, we're discussing it as a possibility, but nothing has been determined. So Val, I'm going to keep you there? Okay, great. Teacher Center Policy Board. Renee, I know that that has worked out for you with your schedule.
I'm still willing to do it unless anyone else would like to take it.
Anyone else?
I'm not able to do that.
Okay, so we will keep you there, Renee, if you don't mind. Thank you. And then moving on to Town, Village, District, that is Mike, Board President and Vice President. Audit Oversight. We have Ted. Ted, you have one more year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have Renee. And we have an opening, right? Because Val had to step out. Anyone feeling compelled?
I can do it.
Wonderful. Irene, that's great. Thank you so much. Okay, so Ted, Renee, and Irene. We have Mike, President and Vice President. And again, I think there will be many avenues for advocacy this year, so. Board Self-Evaluation Subcommittee. Right now, we have Community Engagement. Val, I have you as leading that effort. And Renee and Robin, if you wouldn't mind helping us on that subcommittee. And Community Engagement, I know we'll have, Val, I'm sure you'll be meeting with everyone about what this year will look like. Typically, what that means is any of our community activities, whether they're district-wide or into the community, creating a calendar for us to follow and participate in some of those events. But they may be virtual events, so I think getting the word out will be even more important for all of us. So as the school year opens, within anticipation of opening, having a different view of that particular subcommittee will be really helpful to all of us. And then we have Board Insight and Communications. Pete, you're comfortable still leading that?
Yes.
Okay, and Irene, are you good with that?
I'm great.
And Ted?
I think Ted's getting a little thin. I, I speak for him. I don't really speak for him, but he's got a lot going on.
Yeah, I'd be happy to rotate off if somebody else wouldn't mind jumping on there.
Anyone feeling like jumping into Communications?
I could do it.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right, so I have Pete, Irene, and Renee. And I think that covers everything unless I have missed anything. Okay. So it's my understanding we also have, Monroe County School Boards does have a calendar that came out. Deb, do you have a physical copy of that?
I believe I do. I think I included it on the board calendar already.
Yes, it's on the board calendar. I just, at some given point, they, they send out a hard copy of it. I don't know if they.
Then I apologize. I apologize. They said they were unable to do that, I believe, in a mail copy, but they sent it electronically, and I can certainly distribute those.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so that concludes the reorganization part of our meeting. If we could move right into our regular meeting at this point, if I can call the meeting to order. And approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Thanks, Ted. Any questions?
Amy, I missed it.
It was Ted and Pete.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Edit?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And the approval of the minutes from June 22nd.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so Renee and Irene, any edits? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And Deb, just for the record, June 22nd, we'll have to, Robin would have to abstain from that vote only because of.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for public comment. So just a couple of instructions for public comment for those of you who are out there waiting. Thank you for waiting and being patient. There are two links out there that you can link into. One is to participate in public comment, and the other is to view the board meeting. We just ask if you do have public comment. First, if you could mention your address, and also limit your comments to three minutes, and also wait on the line for a response from us before you log out to log back in to just view the rest of the meeting. We would appreciate it. So Matt, do we have anybody in the waiting room?
At this point, there's no one in the waiting room.
Okay. Then we will move along if no one is there. Okay, we're going to close public comment. We're going into Board of Education reports. There's really nothing to report here. We will have a Board Presidents' meeting coming up. We've been waiting to schedule that meeting simply due to reorganization meetings and trying to assess who will be Board Presidents this year. Once we have that information, it's my assumption that we will be back together within the next couple of weeks. And I'll let you know as soon as we schedule that. Other dates to remember, we have the summer workshop. We were all together today. I'm sure Mike's going to be reporting out on that, but we were together today all day, and tomorrow we will have a half-day workshop from eight until 12:00. And then August 11th, which is a Tuesday, is our next board meeting at 7:00 PM. And now we have the annual adoption and signing of the Board Governing Mission. We're not going to have the signing right now, obviously, but we will be reading Board Governing Mission and our communications agreement one by one. So we'll start with the Board Governing Mission. The Pittsburgh Central School District Board of Education as the governing body of our school district. Values and uphold student success as the fundamental principle for all decisions. Ted?
Serves as the steward and guardian of the district's values, vision, and mission.
Irene?
Leads proactively in the district's strategic and operational planning, setting strong, clear direction and policy.
Pete?
Monitor. monitors district educational administrative and financial performance against clearly defined standards.
Ensures the constituencies contribute to the district's effectiveness.
Renee? You're on mute, Renee.
I'm, I'm not on mute.
There you go.
There you are. Oh.
There we go. Sorry about that. Values and promotes positive and productive relations with the community.
Robin?
Ensures that the district possesses necessary human, financial, and other resources.
Values and promotes a positive and productive Board Superintendent Working Partnership. Ted?
Engages all board members in the governance process.
Irene?
Develops the governing skills of board members.
Pete?
Promotes active teamwork on the board.
Val?
Takes accountability for its own performance as a governing body.
Renee?
This is the highest levels of ethics and integrity.
Robin?
Actively advocates scenarios that are in the best interest of the district.
Thank you, everyone. So what we'll be doing as a board is, we're going to plan this. Deb, I know you've got a few signatures today, and tomorrow hopefully we'll be able to complete both of these with signatures. Okay, moving on to the Board of Education Agreement Regarding Communications. Board of Education members agree that they will act and make decisions only as a seven-member board. Ted?
Board President is the spokesperson.
Irene?
Awareness of public and human relations is critical.
Pete?
Will help one another and constituents follow appropriate processes.
Val?
Issues and concerns will be shared with the superintendent and/or board president and individual board members as appropriate in a timely fashion.
Renee?
Recognize that others see them always wearing the board hat.
Robin?
Never dialogue for the purpose of sharing opinions on matters before the board or influencing others.
They will be courteous listeners at board meetings and functions. Ted?
They will communicate at board meetings, functions by sharing ideas and perspectives during discussions.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay, after reading both of those agreements and mission, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Thanks, Pete. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, Financial Report. Darren?
Brought from my colleague in Special Education, all items are on the consent agenda.
Thanks, Darren. Human Resource Report. Mike?
First for your consideration is the Professional Staff Report. We, it's our hirings. I, I will say that, well, folks are doing it remotely. Our hiring chairs have been doing a great job, and with the. Our hiring chairs have been doing a great job, and with the exception of just a few positions left, we're almost fully staffed going into next year, which is pretty far ahead of normal.
That's great.
Awesome.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks Ted, and I have Renee. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Second for your consideration is the support staff report. Again, we are in pretty good shape going into next year.
Great. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Thanks, Val. And Irene? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And finally, the annual per diem substitutes and special salaries that we set for our accompanists, our substitute teachers, our tutors, et cetera. There's really not a whole lot of changes this year, except modifications we had to make pursuant to New York State minimum wage.
Thanks, Mike. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Pete.
Second.
Thanks, Val. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Special education report. Elizabeth?
Darren stole my thunder. He has the recommendations, are on the consent agenda.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Superintendent's Report. Mike?
There is not a need for an executive session this evening. Before I ask for the board to approve the policy approvals for the second reading, on the agenda, Policy 8241, which is letter D, is listed correctly as patriotism, civility, citizenship, and character education slash interpersonal violence prevention education. I believe in your packets, possibly the word patriotism was left off the title of that. So I just want to make sure that we capture, and it is captured, that the correct title is reflected in the agenda, as I stated, with patriotism as the first word. Other than that, if there are any questions, otherwise, I would ask for approval of Policies 8210, 8240, removal of 8211, 8241, and addition of 8241, with changes.
And that's in the consent agenda, Mike, so we'll-
Oh, you are right. That's correct. Yep. Thank you for that. I was just really excited. I was just really excited we had so many policies out there.
Thank you for the explanation, by the way, Mike.
Yep, you're, you're welcome. The, a, a few things for discussion and updates. I couldn't be prouder of the, the group of people that we worked with today in trying to figure out how we're going to approach school next year. This isn't new news to us that we're going to have to figure out plans, so just a reminder that we started out with a steering committee about five weeks ago. The steering committee is that of 16 people representing 8 through 12, and a combination of administrators and teachers. And what we've been doing for the last five weeks has been to try to predict and prepare for different scenarios without any guidance from the governor or, or, without guidance from OCD. So yesterday, the governor came out with guidance, and luckily, his guidance was the same as the three areas that we anticipated, which, to be honest, wasn't rocket science. It was going to be that schools open. And we have to figure out if we're able to accommodate what's in the guidance, so the other option was that schools open and there has to be six feet of distance, and the extent we would have to look at a hybrid model of learning from home remotely and being at school. And then the third model was that schools do not open, which would be strictly remote learning. The other thing that we talked about was the necessity for preparedness relative to being able to pivot and move between models at any given time. So we may start with schools open, but we need to be prepared for how to teach. The other part that we were very cognizant of was that we have students and staff that may be immunocompromised, that may not be able to attend school, and we want to do everything in our power to provide opportunities to be able to teach and learn remotely for those that are immunocompromised. And so regardless of where we land on any of these three, remote learning will certainly be part of students' experience next year, certainly for those that are immunocompromised. Today, what we did was we reviewed the governor's guidance, and then we, we reviewed the steering committee's work to date, and then we broke into, by levels. We had about 23 or 24 members for elementary level, same with middle school, and then same with high school. The group that came today were members of our district's ILC Committee, District Planning Team Committee, our Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh District Leadership Team, and we also had members of our steering committee. It encapsulated everyone from, certainly, parents to clerical, to paraprofessionals, to teachers, to administrators. It was meant to bring people together that understood how systems and structures worked in schools, and to marry that knowledge with guidance so that we can look at making recommendations for each of the three scenarios, without getting into too many unintended consequences. So we reviewed the schools open, and we're not required to have six feet distance, but we needed to look at what are we doing to mitigate risk through the, the school day. And the way we did that was we literally took a snapshot, starting with a, a child's life at school before they get on the bus, all the way through the day, and the time they get off the bus, and how we can put things in place that are practical, aligned with the guidance, and at the same time, allows a safe, the safest, safest experience possible for our students. We then reviewed all of the parent feedback from the survey. We had 3,000 responses, which is quite amazing when we think that we have, compared to 5,700 possible responses. So we had more than half of our students represented by parent voice via survey. And we used that survey as a vehicle to assess how we were doing specific to remote learning, and what the, the parents' feedback was. We went through quite a process to look at how we would do remote learning differently. Some of the questions that we asked were, were straight from the parent survey. So we talked about the extent teachers and students would follow their typical schedule. We reviewed requirements for synchronous and asynchronous teaching, began to peel that onion back about how many days per week would that be, minutes per session? Does it vary by level? Does it vary by course? We talked about the professional development that's ongoing, specific to teachers, to delivering meaningful experiences in a remote learning environment. We talked about how to assist staff with childcare. We began the process by acknowledging how difficult remote learning is, and dual-working families, single-parent families, especially at the elementary age. We had a big focus on making sure we paid attention to what that environment looks like for our youngest learners. We went all the way through how we prepare for our technology needs in advance, which we, we've done a wonderful job with. We're prepared. We, we have the materials necessary for equity and access. We talked about meeting the needs better for students with IEPs and our English language learners, how to support our students better and differently in our urban suburban program. We, we covered quite a bit today, and I would say today, we, we scratched the surface. I will share that one of the things that was emphasized at the very beginning of this conversation is that we have to do everything in our power to bring students back to school this year, in, in a safe way, but they have to be, we, we have to do everything we can to get them here. When September starts, it'll be over five months that our students have not been in our buildings. And when I think about the, the variance in a student's experiences the last five months, it's significant. And I think about everything from how students are dealing with all of the, the racial incidents, to learning gaps, to the pandemic, and, and what we need to do specific for mental health and social emotional needs. So we did spend quite a bit of time there, and, and how we can be poised either at the beginning of school or pivoting to better meet the different needs for remote learning. We certainly have talked about a single platform use, and thanks to Melanie and others, we are there. So we have a single platform for K3, I believe, and then a single platform for, for 12. We're, we're in a, a, a much better spot, but there's a lot of work to do. There's questions relative to guidance that we're trying to figure out the answers for. Some of the questions include things like what screening would look like before school starts, the, the role and responsibility of temperature checking. And we have some unfinished business around some of the areas that are relevant to a, a student's life, what, that are connected to social distancing, like what does lunch look like? What, what do some of the special area classes look like? What do hallways look like? All those things we are, we are working through, but we're doing it with the voice of our parents from the survey. We're doing it from the voice of the 70 of us together today, and we're doing it with the voice of the public health recommendations that come from Dr. Mendoza. We're now also working with Dr. Cook. We continue to work with the Monroe County Executive's Office and, and others. And I think that part of what makes this process difficult, and I share this today, is that we are typically a district that, when we look at initiatives, we break it up into multiple committees. We look at our systems and structures and, and see what stakeholders, all of this needs to go through, and then where we need to make changes, and it's a long process. So, for example, one of our initiatives has been our grading philosophy, and that's been ongoing for years. So we're forced to make a, certainly a third order change right now in a two-week period. And so talking about that two-week period, we have basically till the end of July to submit our plan, which means that we have about two weeks from today, or from, from the end of the week. So Friday, July 31st, we have our plans submitted. And now, we're, we're at a point where we still are yet to have the Board of Regents' guidance. That comes out tomorrow, and that will deal with primarily regulations and, and policies. So we really try to chunk this out and be as proactive as possible through our steering committee work, which poised us to be successful today in looking at two of the three scenarios. Tomorrow, we will process the extent of social distancing is mandated at six feet in classrooms. We're going to see how we can be creative with use of space, and the extent we would be able to distance students if we use space creatively across the district. If we cannot do that, then we would be looking at what's called the hybrid model, which would mean, how can we accommodate the learning needs of all of our students with a combination of, of remote learning and in-class learning? And how that looks, we're still formulating that plan. At the end of the day, I would, I would just circle back and say that our, our students really need to be with us. We need to be with our students and our families. That's a guiding principle for the work that we're doing, and it's, 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 it's really challenging our levels of creativity and problem solving, especially when all of this is juxtaposed to guidance that's mandated from the state. So we're figuring out questions along the way. We're in a pretty, we're in a remarkable spot. I'm really proud of the work that everyone's been doing and their commitment. So tomorrow, our focus will be on hybrid and, and possibly a plan to accommodate K-12 with creative use of space. So I'll just pause there and see if anyone has any questions about what I just shared out. So this, this is a significant initiative. It's, it's overwhelming in time. It's, it's coming off a period where a lot of our resources were used and time were used to figure out process and implement how to do an election that is all via mail. Our third big thing that we're taking on as far as an initiative is, is the continuance of our equity and inclusion work. As a, as a superintendent's group, we are working towards a, a county plan. At the end of July, we're all getting together to begin to peel back the six areas that we highlighted in our letter, which includes things like our policies and practices, including hiring practices, access to a high-quality curriculum across the board, accelerated professional development, common uses of study, and a commitment to rock the, rock the change. Aside from the, the superintendent's work, internally, we, we are accelerating and continuing our work with accelerated PD for our staff. I'm proud to say we, during this hiring process, we, we have hired people of color again, which is significant. It's, it's our, at least our second or third year in a row where that focus has, has yielded tremendous candidates. We're working with students, and our Director of Student Services overseeing this and, and being poised to present an equity policy, continued review of our, our new code of conduct. Both of those issues involve bringing students together over the summer, albeit remotely for input. We're also looking at our K-12 units of study in, in, in social studies, as well as in English, but specific to social studies, looking at where there are specific areas within the units for some kind of common primary sources and, and common prompts around the topics of citizenship, racism, racism, and beginning that conversation and lessons at a, at a very young age. So that's exciting work. There's a lot on all of our plates when I share the, the three, the three big-ticket items that we have done and are working on, that continue to evolve, but that's been our focus for the summer. Particularly during the summer, we spend that time in a retreat, where we can plan out what our year is going to look like specific to goals. where we can plan out what our year is going to look like specific to goals. And the goals around opening school and equity and inclusion are two significant ones. So that will be happening parallel. And I look forward to being able to present the board at some point in August, our plan for continuing our wonderful work around inclusion and share it in a very broad way once we've completed our initiative around that work. And the last thing I would say around that topic is I don't see this as an initiative that is a checkbox at the end of the year and say we're done. This will be something that's on our plates for quite a while. So with that, I want to thank everyone that's on the Zoom that I'm looking at for all their work today and the work that they're going to do tomorrow and beyond. Appreciate all your help and support with this important, these important initiatives. And I look forward to our progress tomorrow.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Now it's time to approve the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Val. And Irene? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Old business. New business? We can officially welcome Robin to the board now. You have successfully completed your first board Zoom call meeting.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, Robin, and congratulations, Ted. I look forward to working with both of you.
Awesome.
All of us together collectively and looking at what this school year is going to look like. But thank you, both of you, for your service. And at this point, I would like a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Thanks, Ted. And Renee? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good night, everybody. We'll see you tomorrow.
Good night.
Thank you.